Okay, it is six o'clock, July 24th, we're ready to go. We'll start the meeting with a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome everyone. Today is Thursday, July 24th, 2025. Welcome to night school board meeting, where our mission is, the Mission of the Community School District is to inspire, empower, and unite our students in the community of learners in their pursuit of excellence. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion. I move that we approve the agenda with one change, that we take 4.16 out of the consent agenda and make it a 5.00 first action item, just because some details needed to be addressed.
Very well, there's a second.
Second.
We'll call please.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Frankin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern?
Director Swissman?
Yes.
Motion carried 601.
Alright, next up on recognitions, Jonathan Isaacson. Are you here tonight? Yeah, come on up, young man. Let's learn about your Eagle Scout project.
Awesome. Hi, my name is Jonathan Isaacson, and I am going into my senior year at Bednour High School, and I'm a proud member of Boy Scout Troop 89. I've been a student in the Bednour Community School District, since kindergarten, and honestly, I wouldn't have it any other way. Bednour schools have shaped who I am, from the teachers and staff who've supported me, to the classmates who've grown up alongside me. I've always felt this district was more than just a place to learn. It's been a community and a home. So when it came time to choose my Eagle Scout project, I knew I wanted to give something meaningful back to schools, back to the schools that gave me so much. An Eagle Scout project is a leadership and service opportunity, leaving a lasting impact on your community. For me, that meant looking back at what had made my time in school special. And one thing that stood out was the Gaga pit, was playing Gaga pit in middle school. I absolutely loved playing Gaga ball in middle school. It was fun, fast-paced, and inclusive. I have so many good memories tied to that simple wooden pit, and I knew I wanted to bring that experience to future students. With my younger sibling student heading into middle school, I felt it was even more important. I couldn't have done this project alone. I'd like to thank my donors and supporters, Crawford Company, a good family friend, David Swanson, Tim DeLathauer, and of course, my parents, for their generosity and belief in this project. Their support helped bring this idea to life. Of course, like any project, there were challenges. The ongoing expansion at the middle school created some unexpected complications, especially when it came to where the Gaga pits could actually go. But I'm incredibly grateful for the expansion. It's going to be a huge benefit for the school in the long run, and I'm also very thankful to Scott Martin, who helped me navigate the construction issues and find a workable solution. While the Gaga pits may not be in the final home yet, I want everybody to know that even though I'll be heading to Iowa State University next fall, I'm still committed to seeing this project through, and I'll be back to help move the Gaga pits to the permanent location. I thank you all again for being here and for supporting not just my Eagle project, but the future of our schools and students.
Good question.
Yep.
What's the objective of this game? That never... I don't think I can see it. It looks like it's, I don't know.
So you just cram as many kids as possible inside the pits, and then you punch a kickball at each other's feet until you're the last person standing.
Oh, okay. Awesome.
Jonathan, thank you for your last minute flexibility, Mom and Dad as well. With the construction project, what we didn't want to happen as the phases progress, that your hard work and commitment to the project got ruined in the construction. So thank you for working with Scott to make sure that we could get your vision transformed into reality. And I know there will be a lot of middle school students who are super happy to have not one, but two new Gaga pits. So, but thank you for your flexibility. We truly appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Am I correct in the room that your family also has a gold star?
Uh, my elder sister got her gold award.
I want to say congratulations, and following in that tradition, earning the highest award possible in the respective scouting groups.
Jonathan, what will you be taking up in college?
I'm planning on going, majoring in business, and then minoring in entrepreneurship.
How do you spell that? No, I'm just...
He did say English. I'm just gonna say thanks for moving up, and thanks for being flexible. I agree. In the end, it's gonna be amazing, but I'm glad they have a different home for now, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work.
Kids don't care where they're at.
No, exactly right. If you can burn some energy off of them, that's amazing.
Yes.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming today.
Thanks for inviting me.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have softball players here tonight? No. Is there any board member, anyone in the softball program? Did you? Alright, can you take this one for us?
I would love to. Alright, softball all conference. Softball all conference recognitions. First team all conference, Jaslyn Poole, third base. First team all conference, Emma Woltz. Utility, first team all conference, Brooklyn Tierling. Utility, second team all conference, Alexa Schmidt, second base. Second team all conference, Ava Rigdon. Utility, honorable mention, Kayla Kleppi, which I believe is Christie's daughter. Congrats. And honorable mention to Kendall Cleveland outfield, and honorable mention, Alyssa White catcher. Congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies. I'll take this next one. Our baseball team is on the road. Seven thirty game, for those that are interested. It's a big one. And congratulations to the baseball team making the state, first time in 23 years. And special congratulations to Ridley Mathis for being selected as the player of the year, conference player of the year. And also, all conference recognitions for baseball, first team, Ridley Mathis. Second team, Alex Johnston. And second team, Laden Banks. Congratulations to those young men, and good luck tonight. Alright, moving along, this is that portion of the meeting. Those members of the audience wishing to address this body, this is your time to come forward. Please check in with the board secretary. Keep your time to three minutes, and keep it silent. Alright, seeing no one. Transition to 3.05, the BBA report.
That you're not able to be here tonight, so they do not have a report.
And how about Bessa reporting?
Same.
Same. Okay, and superintendent?
Alright, I'll make up for it. A long one. I'll just prep everybody. Well, it's been months, since I did miss you all. It's been a month. Obviously, it's summer. I do hope our families and staff are enjoying some very well-deserved time off. Just a reminder to those out there who are listening and those in our audience, please continue to share with Celeste Miller, a director of communications, your summer adventures. We all love seeing all of the fun you are having during your summer break and all the great places you're getting to explore. As our board president said, congratulations to our boys' baseball team, who upset the number-one seeded Sioux City East baseball team this past Tuesday. In about, I don't know, an hour and 20 minutes, if the game is on time. I know Monday, Tuesday night, it ran about an hour. The start time was about an hour later than it was supposed to be. They'll be playing Waukees Northwest in the semifinals tonight, so we wish them all the best, the Bulldogs. And to our board secretary, Colleen, a very special happy birthday. We really appreciate you spending your special night with us. I know there's no better place you'd rather be, so thank you and happy birthday. Mr. Tyler Reedy, would like to welcome our new executive director of business and finance. Tyler Reedy is with us tonight, and we are excited. He has jumped in, learning, getting to know his team, and so we are happy to have him onboard. Middle school update. Phase zero is progressing, unfortunately, due to some weather and unforeseen setbacks, as we shared the last meeting with transformers and who owned what. But things are moving forward. We do feel like it should be back up on timeline. Let's just hope we don't have any more major weather setbacks. Today, the RFQ was issued, both on the state website and posted on our website for the construction manager at risk. That will be posted, and the deadline for submission of questions is August 5th. To our architect spray, statement of qualifications are due August 7th. And issuance of request, we will develop a shortlisted firms on August 8th, and notify them, and then their proposals will be due back by August 14th. And our goal right now, we have tentative interviews scheduled at the end of that week, mid-August. And then, our goal is to bring a recommendation to the board at a special board meeting on August 21st. So, lots to come, moving fast and furious as we get ready to embark on phase one. We have completed four out of our five days of training and just time together with the entire leadership team. We were blessed to have two very gifted trainers from our school administrators of Iowa join us Monday and Tuesday for some focus training around just overall leadership. And then the remaining time has been on various topics that our directors have led. We even had some, we're shifting to an online platform as to enhance our emergency operating procedures. We have some training with that company today, and we'll round out more training tomorrow with Student Services and our vendor who will support us with learning our new security cameras. So, we've been busy, but it's been a really good week. We even managed to do some fun team building yesterday afternoon, so it's great. Just some, it is hard to believe, but I'm getting ready to talk about these dates. Don't know where summer has gone, but we welcome some of our teachers who will choose to take advantage of the buyback day on August 4th, which hard to believe that is literally about a week away. We welcome all of our new teachers and staff, the week of August 11th for new teacher orientation. And our new teacher breakfast that we do in conjunction with other districts and schools in our area that's hosted or held at the family museum will be the morning of August 14th. And then on Monday, August 18th, we welcome back all of our staff. And that is all staff welcome back week, and our first day of school will be Monday, August 25th. So, just a few weeks, and we'll be back in business, ready to see all of our kids back. So, on tonight's consent agenda that you're about ready to consider and approve, there is an item related to a recent athletic booster donation. I did have a board director reach out to me. And this year, they did their annual donation in two parts. The piece before you tonight is about $29,000, $30,000 worth of specific equipment that they worked directly with the coaches to purchase, and we became aware of these donated items after they were ordered, and wanted to make sure we're compliant with our board policy and recognize their generous donation of equipment. So that is what's on the consent agenda. So, I know I had an opportunity to connect with that board director over that, but I also figured someone else might have questions. But then they also made their larger annual donation. This year it was $100,000. And so we are grateful for their support, their collaboration, and their partnership. About a week and a half ago, you all received an email from our Urban Education Network group, a call to action, letting you all know, just as we've been made aware, that our federal title funding, some of those title funds are being held at the moment. We do not know the status of those. While we are grateful, they released the Title I funds. We are concerned that they have not released our Title II, Title III, and Title IV funding. These funds are critical to the work we do and often to work that is required by the state if funding or and/or the federal regulations. So if funding is eliminated entirely, this could impact by reduction of programs, potentially staff at some point in time, or having to pick up that funding through a general fund, which then impacts other things that we use the general fund for. Just want to give you some examples. In Title II, we receive anywhere from $85,000 to about $100,000 a year, and while that seems like a small amount, that is funding to support effective instruction, which means we can use it. It's really our true funding source for professional learning for all staff, including administrators. That is critical to the work that we do, so we can support teachers in their classrooms. Title III is our English learners. While we don't receive that funding directly in how the structure is in Iowa and it goes to the AEA, we are recipients of supports from staff at the AEA and materials and resources and training to help support our English learners. And then Title IVA, student support and academic enrichment. We get around $30,000 to $40,000 a year in that. This is helping support buildings in their implementation of PDIS. It helps support our career readiness center and staffing in that center. And as you know, the state has requirements that students starting in elementary all the way through 12th grade, there are certain requirements we have to meet around career readiness and post-secondary. And so that helps fund, offset those costs from the general fund. Also, our school-based mental health therapists. It helps support those therapists that we're blessed to have at the buildings, to support students who have social, emotional, and mental health needs that are above and beyond what teachers and administrators and other support staff can provide. And they work in collaboration with all of our staff. It helps fund our STEAM Expo and all the required career readiness software that we have to have to meet state requirements. So, please, if you haven't had a chance, take a look at that email from the UEN. I believe I had it in a previous weekly wrap-up. I can put it back in. There was some information, if you feel inclined, to reach out to our senators and converse people around, at the federal level, to express concern around this. We are grateful. They did release our Title I Part A, which is in recruiting basic programs. This is where our academic intervention is. Some of our literacy work comes out of the partnership we have with Spring Forward that afforded approximately 90 students in our district the opportunity. That is how we increased from 50 last year to 90 this year. Our goal was 100, we got 90. Students who might otherwise have access to both intervention and enrichment in the summer. That is how we helped them fund additional and fund field trips for them. We know some of our students might not ever get to go to some of the museums and places that this program takes them over the summer. So these are critical to the work that not just our district does, but all of the districts in our state and across the country. Without this, Title I, you've got quite a few staff attached to Title I funds. They're amazing. They're a critical part to the work that we do, educating our students, and so it is critical that they understand the impact if they do not release those funds.
I have a question sort of related to that. With the changes in Medicare, do we anticipate that that will then... I know that we have historically, over the last four or five years, done really well in Medicaid reimbursement, and that has allowed us to have, not have to spend as much money on our, you know, not go into the hole as much on our special education students. Do you anticipate that that is going to affect that program that we have and our Medicaid reimbursements?
So I'll answer that a couple ways. I haven't had a chance to dig into that as much, but yes, I do see that it could have a detrimental effect on our district. So actually, we just, our two individuals here at the administration center that support our Medicaid program, Courtney Broderick, who is our Medicaid specialist, and has done a tremendous job over the last four years in increasing our reimbursement through this program. In 2021, we collected or brought in the bill for about $396,000 of reimbursements to Medicaid. This past school year, we were at 1.2 million. So she has steadily, over the years, increased. So what that does, as Director Smithson said, is that offsets... So, as you know, we do not receive all the funding we need to support our students with disabilities, right? Students with IUPs. At the federal level or at the state level, that has been, since public law 94 went into effect in the early 70s, early to mid 70s, we've never been, no one has ever been 100% funded. This helps offset some of that deficit, or what people will say, encroachment to the general fund. And in Iowa, you have to remember that when you have overspent, we come to you each spring to ask, to amend, because we need to increase the budget for certain areas. This one is always one, the special ed one. And that also can impact our taxpayers, because districts can tax back that, what I call contribution, what they call encroachment. So this money, yes, is absolutely essential to the work that we do. So that 1.2, so if we have a deficit of $500,000, that is after we've applied the 1.2. So if we didn't have the 1.2, you've got to take 1.2 plus the, let's say it's a half a million dollars, right? And add those together of how much additional funding we need to support our students. So, yes. That's how many? Is there any other question?
Dr. Morse?
Yes, Dr. Morse.
You said the Level III English learners. I didn't get the figure on that. How much does the Title III go for the English learners?
I don't have that dollar amount, because that is an automatic pass-through to our AEAs. AEAs. But they receive, you know, money to provide support, training and staff to help support us. So we do have teachers hired in our district who support English learners. Those are paid out of general fund like we do our others. In Iowa, the way the structure works, there's a threshold around the number of English learners you have in your district as to whether you can ask for that money to come directly to the district. We, we don't need that threshold to have it come to our district, so those to the AEA and we work collaboratively with them to support students and staff. Because that, the AEA also supports our staff in training and research. You're welcome. And I believe that's the end of my report. Just thinking. Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Transition to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the already noted removal of 4.16.
Roll call please. Right second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Motion carried 601.
All right, 5.00.
I don't know the details of the changes. I just thought something might change with the Infinite Campus renewal.
So the recommended motions that we can have that discussion would be approve the revised quote for CIC as presented.
We approve the revised quote for CIC, Infinite Campus, as presented.
So we've
Do we need a second?
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Second. Your turn. I, we would've gotten there eventually.
So Infinite Campus, as you know, is our student information system. Our Director of Technology, Ben Reller, has just really been working to find ways that we can maximize that student information system and maximize other types of programs so that we can try to create efficiency for staff. So they're spending less time in data entry or creating this or that and more time supporting staff or working with students. So we had been waiting, we're going to add on what's called, I'm blanking on it, workflow suite or, yeah. And unfortunately, CIC did not get us that updated quote. So we have our annual renewal, which was on the original consent agenda. We're adding some additional software or an additional program to it, which then takes the cost now to $103,581. So it was 93, it's about a $10,000 add and this workflow suite will enhance the work that we do. Any questions?
I take it you were kicking the machines of frustration?
Yes, I received the updated invoice about 11:34 last night. So, yeah, but I was excited and I wanted to present it to you guys because I want to make sure it's included in that renewal so you guys can see what we are renewing. And it's a great program. It has one awesome piece is Hall Pass. And right now, our high school, middle school purchase their own Hall Pass. This will include that, so it'll save them a little bit of money. It's a very, it does not cost us a lot per student. So it's only $2 per student. So with a little bit of additional money, there's time for support that they provide us. So a very reasonable price. It also has events and actions, which I'm very excited about because we can set up automatic things like if a student gets a special education IP plan, they get automatically a flag. If they get a D, they can get an automatic email to a parent or to a teacher. If a teacher doesn't submit attendance for a period, that email can go to the secretary of the council. A lot of automatic things that we can set up to make sure things don't get lost and just kind of increase our efficiency.
And also, our goal with this too is to create an electronic kind of onboarding. So as we're bringing on staff or as staff are exiting from the system, we'll have a routing order, whether it starts with HR and ends with IT around making sure they get access to all the systems they need access to. They get their basic thing, badge key and all of that. And so it will route around the departments and the buildings that it needs to, to ensure we also don't miss somebody and something didn't get turned on that they need, like Infinite Campus, so they can do their job. So we're really excited about this. Any other questions?
Okay, roll call please.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Lynch? Sorry, Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
You got me off guard. I'm still a yes.
Director McGivern? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Motion carried 601.
All right, this next series is a continuation of the last board meeting. Through these here, 5.01, do we have a motion?
I move we approve the resolution appointing the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the same.
Second.
I don't think we discussed anything on these.
So these next agenda items are all required as we move through the sale of the bonds and so that we can receive the funds from the bonds. This is a synthesized way to say it.
Okay, roll call.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Motion carried 601.
Motion 5.02.
I move we approve the tax exemption certificate for said bonds.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Motion carried 601.
Motion 03.
I move we approve the resolution authorizing the continuing disclosure certification.
Second.
Roll call.
Director McGivern? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carried 601.
All right, lastly, 04.
I move we approve the resolution authorizing the terms of issuance and providing for and securing the payment of school infrastructure sales services and used tax revenue bonds.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern? Motion carried 601.
Motion 05.
No motion. Oh, no. Oh, this is a final read. Yes. I move that we approve policy number 407.1 as presented.
Any seconds?
Oh, second, sorry.
I was off a motion.
Do you want to comment on this one or? The first, first and final read? Okay, all right, roll call.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern? Director Smithson?
Yes.
Motion carried 601.
All right, 06, that's discussion. Pause here if there was any discussion.
Just some of these policies you've seen, having to come back through as now House File 865 was passed after the Senate File 418, like there's just, that is why the series of 100s are on there. So you've just, these have, as a result of the recent legislative session, there are compulsory changes that need to be made and that is what is in front of you. Most of them are not significantly changed, but as you have a chance to review these between now and our next board meeting and on 14th, please let me know if you have any further questions.
I kind of do, actually. With the anti, with the bullying policy and then the new 1041 E1, so will we still keep track of, like, are we not tracking any reason for any bullying? We're just tracking that there is some now? But I mean, I'm just curious as to, before I thought we had to report that and so now we're not reporting anything as far as that's concerned?
Based on recent legislation, yes.
Now, I actually felt like, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead. I'll chime in next. Go ahead. You're fine.
I think it actually makes trying to address bullying easier and, because it doesn't have to just be about one thing. Any kind of pattern harassment now qualifies as bullying. I think you've got a legitimate concern about we're not tracking what the reasons or the waters behind it were. That's a loss.
If we're seeing a lot of one thing, then we can work to address that more and I, you know.
But I think it makes addressing bullying actually easier.
Okay.
And Director Smithson, ironically, today we had training, our administrators had the opportunity to learn from our district legal counsel. One of the things that she definitely addressed was the recent updates to the anti-bullying, anti-arrestment piece as well as investigations. And so as she shared with them today, a good investigation is going to drill into the specifics of what is going on. And as they do well in all situations, if we start to see patterns, then it's where do we need to be more proactive around our work with students and/or how do we individually tailor the support for that student? So today actually felt timely. We had training on both of those things.
I just worry that if we're not tracking, that we may miss something. But you're right, a good investigator will, but I just feel like there might need to be more of a paper trail, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And my on and no, make sure we work with our administrators that as they're working through their investigations, that if we're noticing concerns around that, we will definitely help coach.
All right, 5.07, just a question.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to talk with you in advance of this meeting, so I'll ask the question now and I apologize for not taking care of it earlier. I was just a little bit surprised that socioeconomic status was giving a stroke from 603.4.
We were to, I don't know that I've been able to get great clarity around why. I will continue.
Because it continues to be present in other related policies.
Well, and what's interesting is I was just having a conversation with our Executive Director of Curriculum before the board meeting today because as part of our title funds, Perkins was put in there, although they didn't withhold the Perkins funding for career technical education. They do call out some student groups that, they're citing a piece of legislation from 1996 that would preclude these student groups such as immigrants. And they're relating it back to federal funds for things like early, federally funded early childhood programs like a Head Start or career readiness through the Perkins Grant to welfare systems and welfare funding. And so it was interesting as I drilled into that today and worked with our Executive Director of Curriculum around it, that they're calling those specific types of things out as well.
Let me have a look at this, that socioeconomic is necessarily a protected class. It's more of a, and it should just be a given, I mean, who cares really if you're qualified, right? So I think the rest of these are more.
But essentially, that's what I mean. Specifying there says it doesn't matter. We're going to give you the same treatment regardless. And now, we could say, yes, it matters. But I mean, it was, it was surprising because everything else has been removing gender identity. It was like, wait a minute.
For me, that's going back to some of our local folks in that side of the Legislative House, the Senate in Iowa to understand better.
Okay.
Why they did that decision.
All right, 5.08, motion please.
I move that we approve the policies listed under 5.08 as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Chapias?
Yes.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Motion carried 70.
5.09.
I move that we approve the policies listed below as presented.
All right, second, you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Director Breckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
No.
Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
No.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chapias?
No.
Motion carried 40.
All right. And the May financials?
I move we approve.
Miss Skip.
All right, do we have to?
Oh, thank you.
Let's start priorities. Yeah, no, I was, I was, I just like to, uh, so let's start priorities. This is an important work for us. I believe it's influencing policy that impacts all of Iowa. And let's editorialize a little bit what I've learned going through this last round. Small muscle movements have more probability of success than larger policy changes. So example of a large policy change, I think the vouchers are here to stay for a while. Small policy change, which we were successful on, was removing certified male requirements on absenteeism, saving us, well, the state school districts, you know, thousands of dollars, getting rid of that. So that's where I think we can get success is what, and I would call this as parasitic drag that we have of requirements that we can zero in on a handful of those and message those to our legislative leadership in the next session.
A number of the policies that we just looked at to go by next time involve a lot of the sort of clarification and fixing of the new attendance and occupancy law. I think there's still work needed there, so we may want to speak to that. The laundry list of specifics, I don't really think need to go on our policy recommendation as deep, but I think it still needs continuing refining improvement.
Okay.
All right, now I can say, so this is, yeah, this is malleable. We, we control what we want to forward in the next round. So, you know, I encourage all board members to take a look at this and by, you know, for next meeting, if you have inputs or into the superintendent and we'll take a look at it. And, and this goes on to all staff too. So when I address the staff coming back to, back to school, I mention this because numbers matter and we're seven here, but if we have all hundreds in our organization forwarding this, that gets more interest when they go back into session in January.
I was going to thank you for putting in the educational standards and accountability piece. I think that's really important that if we're going to have ESAs, that private schools be held to the same standards and the same parameters that public schools do. Especially that second one, require all non-public private charter schools to accept all students who meet any financial requirements. I appreciate that a lot. I think that that makes a big, it's just making sure that we are standing up for, hey, you know, we serve everyone and if you're going to get public money, you really should serve everyone as well.
Those are our priorities last year.
Okay. Now I think we're ready to move on to the May financials.
So as I was saying, you probably, you mean, yes. Yes, it's July. I move that we approve those May 2025 financials as presented.
I was seconded.
Any discussion?
Just a quick note, I sent Dr. Morse an email about the management fund under other funds and she clarified it very much because it says that while expenses shrunk in the management fund by about 99.1%, and you clarified that very quickly for me. So I think it would be good for everybody to hear that.
So if you remember, management fund is largely where all of our insurances come out of, right? Well, insurances aren't paid on a monthly basis. And so there's usually a couple hit points where big withdrawals come out. And so in that And so, in that month that we're recording on, there was very minimal activity in that. So, there would not be expenditures for that month. Any other questions about the financials?
All right, roll call please.
Director Larkin, hold on, sorry. I do want to clarify, well, no one asked me about this. I think it's important when people see this. We, there's, in that second paragraph where it says the month saw an overall reduction in the fund balance of one point seven four million, and of the overall year to date, looks like we're having an increase. Please keep in mind, when you approved the settlement agreements about a month ago now, you approved for all staff to have a one-time additional payment of two thousand dollars. That will, that totals about two point one, two point two million dollars. And we were, we're already trending to be about one point five million, or the projection appears. And we're in the process of closing out the twenty-four, twenty-five books. But we don't have hard data, we're still in unobligational. But we were trending the last time we were at a board meeting of running a deficit spending or spending our, overspending our revenues by about one point five plus that two point two. So, you know, it is not that we're continuing to funnel tons of money into the fund balance. Fortunately or unfortunately, as we worked with our IDPS team, they felt it was important to put some parameters around that one-time payment. And those parameters, if you recall, was you still had to, you were employed with the district as a junior and remain employed as of November first, why am I, November first of this school year. So, those funds won't be expended until the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, it's gonna look like something may be going in, but remember, we have that large payment.
FY twenty-six allocations and nickels?
Pardon me?
They'd be FY twenty-six budget allocations.
Correct. They were decided in FY twenty-five, but because of those parameters that it was important to our IDPS team, it will be a fiscal year twenty-six expenditure.
Yeah, so it would show up on twenty-five.
Correct. But wanting to help clarify, that will help. As we were committed to board and to the IDPS team to bring that fund balance back in a place that's healthy, but yet is respectful.
All right, roll call?
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGibber?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Frackin?
Yes.
Motion carries forward.
And then roll call, presentation for two minutes.
Yeah, just more of a discussion. You should have in your folders a document that looks like this. Some yellow on it, some blue, some graphs. I was asked to provide an enrollment update as we get ready to open up the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. What you can see is for elementary and high school, we're at the moment trending down students as compared to where we were this time last year when we were opening the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In regards to high school, we had a smaller eighth grade class that's kind of making its way up. And so, that can influence that as well. In elementary, as you know, we worked with IDPS and staff and you all that we have, we're opening with two less kindergarten sections this year and one less first grade section. That is consistent with our other neighboring districts. They too are seeing a decline, especially in their kindergarten, well, kindergarten and first grade enrollments. Birth rates tend to be trending down at the moment. And so, birth rates in the county and in our city are going to impact kindergarten enrollment. So, we still have relatively large classes in grade four and five. Those are our two biggest classes from an elementary perspective. Middle school, interestingly, is trending up as compared to this time last year, which is the first time in several years that it is going to be above a thousand. When I first got here, I think we were around eleven hundred. That's a lot of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders for one building. You almost are, I feel the need for two. We dropped into about the nine fifty range, which actually for our building is a really nice size. And middle school over the last few years, because of their decline enrollment, had worked with us to reduce staff through attrition because the enrollment numbers were not there to support it. And start the year, they will be, they'll be appropriately staffed, but it's going to feel a little bit different this year because they have a few more students than they were, have had in a couple of years. And then, overall enrollment K-12, now this doesn't include our preschool numbers. This is just strictly our K-12 enrollment. We're down about a hundred students. And when you look at the chart, when you look at the two graphs, the certified enrollment and the enrollment served. So, if you remember, certified enrollment for the number of students who reside within our district boundaries. And so, that has, as you can see, we've had over, since fiscal year two thousand and seven, and that number is captured on our October first student count day, right? And is certified on October fifteenth. Thirty-eight, twenty-five point six is the enrollment as of October first of twenty twenty-four, which set our budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Yes, great question. Where our district is blessed is we continue to be solidly a net positive open enrollment district. And we are trending to be up overall in the number of open enrolled students coming into our district for the twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'll get the, I don't know, I just guess I'm going backwards here. And as you can see in our enrollment served, which includes open enrolled, tuitioned in students and resident students, that line is a little flatter, right? Because of our net positive open enrollment to the district. And now, the other piece, as you're considering your legislative priorities, that I would urge the board to give some serious thought to, is if you recall, I was really trying to work with our local legislators to put a deadline on your voucher application process to align at least at minimum with our open enrollment, which we were grateful, they restored the deadline for open enrollment applications, and they restored it back to March first, which does help us from a staffing, budgeting standpoint. It would be wonderful if they could align the voucher application process to that same deadline. And the state determines if parents are gonna get those, or families are gonna get access to those vouchers they've applied for. We, in school districts, open enrollment are required to provide a response to those open enrollment applications as soon as possible, but within like thirty days. It would be nice if the state did the same for our vouchers, right? So that by March thirty-first, we knew how many students would be exiting or have requested to leave to go access non-public private schools. Unfortunately, their deadline was June thirtieth. And as I think I've shared at previous board meetings, even after our certified enrollment count day of October first, our numbers in that arena were still fluctuating into early December, before we had our, kind of what was considered our final number. Which, if you lose students that way, and it's a significant amount, that makes it hard to staff and budget appropriately, right? So, as we consider our legislative priorities, that might be also an area of work that we might want to urge so that we can meet our state and be good stewards and honor the budget timelines and deadlines that we have and not have to go before the SBRC. So, any questions? The enrollment update that I provided.
Dr. Morris, typically done, more kid, typically was kind of in flux until like September with kids moving in or et cetera. So, th- th- these are good numbers, but they could change.
And yes, they could change, and actually, they have changed. So, compared to where we started, when we, as you also know, we intentionally moved our re-enrollment or registration process back from July to February because we needed to know who's coming back, right? So, we can start staffing and budgeting appropriately. So, from the time we started tracking that data in late February to now, those numbers have changed dramatically. And even have changed in the last month. So, in the last month, we've picked up some additional students in the elementary and high school. We could lose some more. And then, in terms of open enrollment, kindergarten is actually, incoming kindergarten families have till September first for their open enrollment. So, yes, things could fluctuate still a little bit more, and we could still pick up some additional students. So, we've picked up some new move-ins as we historically do over the summer. So, we'll continue. But as you know, everything's, the budget had to be finalized at the end of May. So, the staffing we have is the staffing we have. I mean, if we were to need to add staff because we had an increase so significantly of students, we would definitely step back and reflect on that.
Let's, may I also point this question to our county rep? What do you guys see on the county level as far as population, new families, birth rates, demographic, that type of thing?
Yeah, we run statistics for our financial statements as well. And so, the overall county population is still hovering around a hundred seventy-five thousand countywide. Of course, we have four school districts include, and all the private and other schools that are within that whole population. So, countywide, we're just not growing significantly on population-wise as compared to Dallas County next to Polk, which is by far the fastest-growing county in the state and sometimes even the west. So, we're, Scott County as itself is pretty stagnant as itself. You know, of course, you'll have different pockets whenever you have a neighborhood that goes in or something along that line, and that can always fluctuate at district. And then, as far as housing, you know, that turnover of new people coming in and out, you know, we're, we're kind of subject to the price of housing within our district compared to other districts, and as well as the national, federal borrowing rate and what those incentives are. How likely is someone to move down the block versus moving to a new community? That plays a factor, is somebody moving in or out. And also, thinking back on the arsenal as well is a, is a big factor as well as, the arsenal feeds both sides of the river as far as where people choose to live. And we have to watch that as well as in our, in our communities, is making sure the arsenal's supported and that we can continue to draw people, our forces and support staff to the class cities.
Do you guys information share with Rock Island County and how they're doing across the river?
Not, not, indirect only. Yeah. The administrators, they get together once a month, actually. The cities and county administrators will get together once a month for communication as well between different projects. But as far as their statistical data, I, indirect only.
Thanks. All right, thank you for that update. All right, board, shared communications, Senator Director Castro, both on our clock lines.
Just the only thing, congratulations to the boys' baseball team. Just to get there is awesome. To get through the first round is awesome. Anything from now on is gravy, so keep up the good work. Lots of teams from Eastern Iowa represented in the, in different tournaments going on, and that's good to keep it out of the Des Moines area.
I want to give a big, big shout out to some of our Bednorf wrestlers. Four, in fact, Cody Trevino, TJ Kester, Jake Knight, and Lincoln Jip, all competed last week in the Junior Nationals for wrestling, freestyling Greco. The four that I mentioned, Cody, I believe, was in a two-hundred-and-fifty-six man bracket and went four and two, so he had a really good run. And then, both TJ and Lincoln Jip got seventh place, which is absolutely incredible. And I'm sure there was a hundred-and-twenty-eight or twenty-fifty-six man bracket, and Jake Knight placed eight. And then, another special shout out to Lincoln Jip, who, as I understand it, was pressured by a teammate to give Greco a try, which he has not done in Fargo, if I understand things correctly, and he won the whole thing. So, we have a returning, we have a Bednorf national champion in Greco for Junior National Freestyle, which is absolutely incredible. It is the, I think arguably, one of the biggest tournaments, if not the biggest tournament in high school. So, that's quite an achievement.
Greco rolling.
Right, this is where they can use their legs.
And we never compete well in that, the Olympics.
That is unfortunately kind of the brushed to the side for the United States. The premier's freestyle, but Greco in many ways is just as tough and is dangerous. So, a big shout out to them.
I don't have anything.
I would just like to re-ask that we look at our board self-evaluation. We have not done one since, for two years now. And we have a policy that we're supposed to do a board self-evaluation each year. So, I would like to ask for that to be done again. Thanks.
I too would like to best wishes to our baseball team tonight. I've been approached to be a volunteer coach in our district. Coaching has always been a passion of mine and a lifelong dream of mine, is to also go coach my boys. After plenty of praying, talking with my family, and to avoid any conflicts of interest within the district, I will be resigning my seat on the board effective after tonight's meeting. I would like to thank Dr. Morris and Director Larkin for supporting me in this tough decision. I would also like to thank all the other board members here tonight for your patience with me as a new board member and always understanding, especially to Paul Castro, who I always was picking his brain. He's always been a mentor to me, he was my coach in high school, and he's a great man to be able to look up to. I believe we have a great community. We have the best teachers, paras, staff, principals, advent team, secretaries, lunch staff, maintenance department, custodians, and coaches in the state of Iowa. These, everybody in this district gives their all every day for our awesome students. And I'm glad that I was able to, you know, get to witness all of this and be a part of that and represent our district for the year and a half that I was on the board here. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody and go dogs.
I, I'm still surprised. I was just going to remind our teachers that it is not yet August, and that's all I have.
Looking like a great teacher.
Thank you, Director Frackin, for your service. This is a volunteer job, and anyone running into this, I think it's bigger than, and the time commitment is more than anyone could imagine. We wish you well, always supportive, people supporting their passions. We live in a great country that enables us to explore passions, and we want to support you in the journey of your passion, absolutely. And also, just thrilled, our baseball team, the exposure we get, not just the baseball, but we've really been having a lot of great talent in all our sports and non-sports competitors. And I agree, since I've lived in this town, it is an impressive place and town. And could you just let us know what the process is when we have a board vacancy?
Yes. So, first, I want to say thank you. Thank you for serving, for being willing to learn and ask great questions and work with us. So, we appreciate what you have done in your almost two years as a board member, so thank you. And obviously, wish you all the best. So, in terms of the vacancy, because of the timing, so in the, in the statute, there is specific language around timing and whether or not you appointment versus special election. So, in our case, because we are close to the general election in November, the board has the option to appoint, and I'll walk through what that looks like. In terms of if voters in our In terms of if voters in our district boundaries wanted to file a petition to force a special election, they can, however, because of the way the statute reads, and I can quote it and pull it up if you want me to, that special election would then end up falling during the general election. So if we were not within that timeline, I think it's, you know, more than a hundred-and-eighty days, but no less than forty days or forty-five days or something like that. So we fall right in there as to where it will line up in the general election. To file a petition, they would need to obtain a minimum of a hundred signatures for thirty percent of the total number of votes cast in the last election. Well, given the number, which I don't know if we ever tracked to the exact number down yet, we've been, we've had such short notice and we haven't heard back, our thirty percent would definitely be more than a hundred signatures. And so to, to file, and then if we were, we, ours, wouldn't have a special election, but in the case, it could cost upwards of about sixty thousand dollars. Now, when we are, as we know, we have three seats up in November, there are three of our board members that are up for either to rerun or to step down and let other people run and take those seats. We split the costs of that general election. So with that said, we also have you, as a board, have thirty days from the time of the effective date of the termination to appoint someone. So we have some draft communication ready to post on our website tomorrow and potentially for a press release. And then we open that application process up, which I propose to you could look something like, anybody interested could email a current resume and respond to, to questions. Questions could be something to the effect of, why do you, why are you interested in serving on Bednorf Community School District, School Board? What previous work, volunteer or paid has, do you feel qualifies you to be a part of? Something to that effect. We would then ask that applications be received somewhere around August seventh, and we'll finalize all of this. And then if the board chooses to go this route, would work with you to bring, we already know due to the timeline for the construction manager at risk, special board meeting on August twenty-first, that gets you right around thirty days, so it gives us enough time to solicit interested applicants who might be interested in being appointed, to get applications in for you have a chance to review those and interview them, all of it in open session, and then work as a team to identify the individual you feel would be your best fit. And I would, to mean our, all the statutory timelines, look at potentially holding those interviews, having your discussion, and making a potential appointment at that August twenty-first special board meeting.
Now, forgive me for, for directing, I've started recalling some of the details that have been dormant for so long. As I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, if we make an appointment, which does seem to be the most efficient way to move forward in short term, whomever we appointed would essentially serve through November of this year.
Correct.
And at the general election, the top three vote-getters would be elected to the four-year terms, and the fourth vote-getter would be elected to finish.
No, just, just to, just to clarify.
Yeah, let me just get that clarified.
Yeah.
So we, on the ballot, it would indicate three four-year positions and one two-year position.
So it would not be the top.
You'll have to run separately. Candidates will have to identify that.
Decide which.
What was your question?
Which, which seat they would like to run for.
So technically, you could have a ballot with, let's say, five candidates all running for the two-year seat, but none of them can run for the four-year seat and vice versa. You might have five candidates for the four-year seat and none of them can run for the two-year seat. So there's a declaration, as I understand it, prior to getting on as a candidate as to which seat you're running for.
You're gonna have to turn the paperwork for that.
Right. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate something just to clear it up. Director Frackin, his timing of this, even if there's a petition to force it, we can, it still delays it till November, correct?
Correct.
So there is no special election. If the election occurs, it's gonna occur at the November general election, and the district is not gonna have to pay for that special election. I just want to make it clear that Director Frackin is not costing the district anything.
That is.
So I just don't want people to pick up on that money skip snippet and think that he's somehow forcing us upon us because the timing is obviously being done to prevent it from closing it.
So.
Right, that seat's gonna be.
Correct.
Yeah, I just, I'm aware, I just.
That's a good point.
That number was thrown out, I just want to make sure, but he's clear that he's, there's no costing.
Correct.
Correct.
And just remember, there's other requirements in order to file that petition for a special election.
And it kind of, and I, is there a date you're effective, is that today?
Tonight.
Okay.
My resignation.
So I, I have a question, I guess, about the requirements. I know that in the past, when we've had a resignation, a person was appointed by the board to serve out the rest of that person's term. Is that, is that because of this particular timing? Because in the past, that's been done, where a person was appointed to serve out the rest of that person's term.
It would only be if it was like.
It was a very, they were posted the next.
Regular election. Yeah, if they resigned after, like, if you resigned in December, it would be appointed to finish the term.
Okay. But because it was after the election, okay. All right, I see, because it's the, okay, that, no, that's what my question was, is I know that in other cases, people have been appointed to serve out the rest of.
But it was only a few, it was a few months, and that person resigned because they moved out.
Well, the example, the, the example you're giving, to your point, Richard, if, if this was December and there was an appointment, it would go to the next election, which would be November twenty-two.
Exactly.
But because we're prior to the next election, which is November twenty-five, that's probably the.
One discussion.
I don't think it's appropriate to appoint somebody to fill a, a two-year term when there's a general election.
Well, and I, I understand, I just am asking because there has been precedent where that has happened, so that's why I'm asking, because I have a friend who resigned in Davenport, and there was someone, someone was appointed then to serve out the rest of her term of two years.
So that is probably because that's when the next general election.
And that's, that's just what my question was.
Great question, and.
Are there questions?
I miss you, Kevin.
I miss you guys.
Let's get that defense rolling, that's your, that's your bailiwick, buddy. Teams offense scores points in defense wins championships, you know that too. So best of luck, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, seven zero one. When is that, when is that special meeting?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Correct, I am proposing the twenty-first.
October twenty-first.
Which we will start at seven PM because you also have elementary unpack your backpack that night, so we as staff will be supporting the buildings, and we'll need time to get back in, and if we do have a director that has students in elementary school who might want to attend their child's unpack backpack, so I do not want it to conflict.
So you're saying the twenty-first of August, and then that's seven PM?
Correct.
Okay, I'll go.
I'm proposing two potential agenda items, the first being, we, our goal is to have a CM at-risk, construction manager at-risk, to propose to you for your consideration and approval that night, so we can keep the middle school project on the greater timeline that we had set out with the board with Ray, and then to provide you all an opportunity to interview potential, meet those who have applied for the appointment, and to consider their applications and so potentially appoint someone that evening, which would be effective at the next, at the September meeting.
So question then, we'll have our four, the board meeting on the fourteenth, and then only the other, the only other meeting will be the special meeting, there won't be two regular meetings in August.
Correct.
Okay.
It's just unfortunately the fourteen cuts timeline short, and we want to make sure we honor the statutory timelines that are out there.
All right, do we have a motion to go to close session?
I move in turn to close session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five sub one sub C, which allows for a closed session, closed session to discuss strategy with counsel and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disposal would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation.
Give me a second here? Do we have a second?
You're good, second.
Yeah, I'm second.
We'll call.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Swiston?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Larkin?